States of America. And consider the holiday for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Packard.
Here.
Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approval of agenda, if we could add next week's meeting discussion.
Okay, move to approve.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes, approved minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard that are not on the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to say so.
State your name, please.
Evelyn Schlamper. Do I push this in?
That's gotta be up.
Oh, it's on.
Should be up, Evelyn.
I just wanted to commend you. I've noticed the, yeah, surprise. I noticed that there are folks doing some masonry and window caulking out there. They're starting today, so that's a really good move. And I haven't heard anything recently about the heating and air conditioning. But one thing I did notice is that those folks had no idea of the historical importance of this building, so I did mention that to them. And they were very excited about that and, you know, would, I think, take extra care and caring for the building. The other thing is, I can also commend the, well, the facilities planning committee that they have open meetings on Zoom, although the website does not include some updates of members and what the mission of it is specifically. So that's all I have.
Thank you, any other visitors?
Honey Kruger. I, I just want to ask if it's possible to have public meetings. We've, we've, I've been on the Save Our Historic Courthouse Committee, and I think it's time for us not to be on opposite sides any longer. We want to build a jail and we want to make sure that the voters' voice is heard. They, two to one, they believe that the, that the dignity of the courthouse is something that a shiny new architect's vision of a building is not going to be able to compare. The citizens of Clay County own the courthouse, the county commissioners are stewards, caretakers, and I just ask that you really carefully consider, how do we come together and create a vision? How do we come together and say, let's, let's create a, I am concerned about the workers in this building and their complaints, and I don't want that to be ignored. I, I want us to come together and say, how do we create, how do we fix some things now, plan for the future? How do we keep the, when the citizens come to interact with the judicial system, that they have a building that represents the integrity of our judicial system, that has a link to our past? And I, I feel passionately about this, and I, I believe that the committee and the county commissioners have done their best to be stewards and to, to, that, I just think we have different visions. And there's got to be a way where we can come together, compromise, say, this works, this doesn't work. You have, you can explain to me some of your reasoning, and I hope that you will listen to the voters of this county and just do everything possible to preserve this very important, dignified building, thank you.
Any other visitors? You don't have to use a microphone, most.
I carry pretty good.
All those complain.
Okay. Sam Hykes from the Hykes Family Farm. You hear me okay? Okay. I'm here to talk about hemp and medical marijuana.
Turn the microphone on, please.
Should be up.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello?
Can now.
Okay. Drew, I've had several conversations with him, but I didn't say to the commissioners that I want a spot to talk, so I guess I would like, do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, because we're just gonna talk about the licensing of medical.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So, a little bit of history here. I gathered all of this information starting in January up at here as lobbyist. Knowing that in 2018, hemp became a legal crop in this whole country. And it was, it was added as another cash crop because of the failure of the tobacco industry, because of the health issues of tobacco. So they were looking for another cash crop that may fill that bill, okay? So, we run a fresh local fruits and vegetables out there, and right now we're feeding about ninety people, plus the hospital, plus the nursing home. So we're feeding about five or six hundred people a week. My daughter runs that. I have ten acres of CRP that's been in ten years, and I'm taking that out of production. And our intention is to grow, our intention is the path of least resistance politically here, which is hemp for CBD oil production, okay? We also have interest in medical marijuana. I know that there's a big need in the health field for people that can gain some relief from medical marijuana. And who knows where recreational is gonna go? It's such a political, it's such, it's so confused. So I'm here to say, we have interest in producing hemp for CBD oil. We also have interest in having a dispensary, because one of the documents that Drew gave me, hundred and sixteen page rules and regulations for the state of South Dakota, I read through that pretty good. And there are three different categories of growing. One of them is outdoor growing. And I have a field that I'm going to convert into certified organic production for food-grade CBD oil, okay? So, I hope that the council, the, the commissioners are able to do this peacefully with the city of Ramillion, because there's a long history of of, of not very good cooperation, particularly in areas of joint jurisdiction. And I think the county should put their foot down. I think they should tell the city what we're gonna do, and not have the city tell us what they're gonna do. I mean, this needs to be jointly done by both of us. So we're in the, in Clay County, right on the city limits of Ramillion. Most of you know where our place is, it's right across the street from Asaba. The road is the line between the city of Ramillion and rural Clay County. And so our facility there now has about a hundred people a week that have come to get fresh local produce, and we would like to have a dispensary there at some time in the future. Right now, our attempt is pursuing that, but pursuing production of legal hemp. Not to be confused with medical marijuana or recreational marijuana, all of which is still encumbered with all of this politics, and who knows where that's gonna end up? But we know where hemp's at. It's a legal crop. I don't have to have a license to grow. I don't have to have a permit to grow, only from the state. Oh, yes. And, you know, they weren't very, when I was up there, they weren't very helpful up there. As a matter of fact, they seemed to be pretty much adversarial, but that's where we're at as the Hykes Family Farm, and this is to let that be known to you. Any other questions that you may have? I think we have several people here that can give testimony to the value of medical marijuana and/or CBD oil. Anybody on the screen, or do I have to ask them, or will they?
No, you just say what.
Any other questions? Yeah, do you have any other questions?
Not right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other visitors? Hearing none. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four. Rezoning certain property from A1 to light industrial. Any questions by the board?
No, it looks pretty straightforward to me. Like the, the location. Thank you.
I move to approve it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, Chris. Highway Department, right away application. So we've got midco at three hundred and eighteen streets. Larry's not on, is he?
Um, no, Rod's on vacation, and Larry was not gonna come in. Rod did ask me to pass along that both of the midco applications have been reviewed by both him and Larry, and they both recommend approval.
So I move to approve. I'll take it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Right away application for midco at Fairview Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Yeah, a lot of people are gonna be very happy to have fiber optic cable.
Drive away application for Mark Turd.
Looks a lot better than it did the other day.
Yeah, it's filled out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question, width of vengeance, I, I can't make that out. I mean, I, I can't figure out what that says.
Which one?
Uh, number three, width of vengeance. It's. Is that fifty?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. And a driveway application for Andy Johnson at two, two, three, Red Road.
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Ditch cleaning for Leyton Strom, since Rod's not here. I think he hasn't called me or gotten back to me on that one, so I'll just put that on next agenda, okay?
Yeah, we don't have any information on here.
Supposedly, because I added it, Leyton called me and then Kerry told me that Rod was on vacation. Rod's been out looked at it, per Leyton, so, but I wanna hear it from Rod first.
Right, right. Sounds like a good idea.
We'll move that to next, next week.
Okay.
Uh, twenty twenty-two budget hearing.
So we're required to have a, a public hearing on the first Tuesday in September for the next year's budget. I have not received any correspondence or any comments or anything from the public, so.
And this was published?
Yes.
Yeah, I just don't, I doubt anybody knows about it, because they don't, you know, they don't read the legal, legal ads. I mean, you know, I think, we might, as a commission, consider in the future putting out some kind of press release a couple of weeks in advance, you know, to really let people know you're, you're invited and to give them a link to the URL where, where the budget is. I, I don't think most people even know we're, we're going through a budget, a budget process, and you know, it's not surprising that nobody's here to talk about the budget under the circumstances.
We've had people in the past come that if they had a concern, so it's not like they, I mean, the ones that are, oh, excuse me, the ones that have, you know, that have a a reason to come have came. I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think it hasn't been that they haven't had an opportunity. For those people that want it, they show up, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, so, so, so people who have a, a strong self-interest find out about it because of their self-interest, but I, you know, nobody who sort of has the public interest at large in mind shows up, and, you know, it, it helps to have, you know, to have a wider, a wider group discussing, you know, what, what really matters to them and what doesn't, and their priorities and so on, so, 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 so I hope in the future, you know, we, we think about, you know, and, and that, you know, Kerry's doing her job, but I feel like this is our job, you know, is, is a couple of weeks ahead to make sure the, the public knows.
Does anybody have anything else for that budget hearing? I mean, we'll keep it open, because it's not nine thirty yet, in case anybody shows up. The only thing after last Tuesday's meeting with the fair board, since we're considering letting them use our lawnmower, I went to Ace and had them give me a price. They haven't got it to me yet. He gave me a ballpark. With trading arts and, and the government discount, a new one would be around five thousand dollars, and that's a bigger one. It's a light commercial with a sixty inch deck instead of forty-two we have now.
So it's a sixty inch gravely, probably?
Uh, no, it's still gonna be a hustler.
Okay.
But it's a commercial one.
Yeah, he called, he called it light commercial. When you get into the full commercial, that's like thirteen thousand.
For what it's worth, the city of Jefferson has the light commercial one that you're talking about, and they also have a really nice, you know, higher-end John Deere. They prefer the hustler.
And I did go to John Deere to appraise them. They were eighty-five hundred dollars, so I don't think that was, have to worry about, my biggest concern was also with the, the more we currently have, we keep all on the filter off, so it's building pressure somewhere, but and Ace knows about it, because they're the ones fixing it, so, but they were still gonna take it in on trade.
And it's a spin-on filter, oil filter, it's just blowing it right off the crankcase.
Yep. Can't figure that out.
Building pressure somewhere to blow that off, but.
Weird.
And that could be something that we could either purchase for next year, or if we've got the money, we could do this year right now. So, but hopefully by next Tuesday, he's got me a quote. Is one enough, or do I need John Deere's in writing? Quote.
It's under fifty thousand, so you don't have to.
Okay. I didn't know where else to go.
There's nobody else in Ramillion, but I know.
Not that I'm aware of, and they sell gravelys also, but they're higher priced, too.
There's probably something in Yankton, I suppose.
Oh, definitely.
Marx or.
Martin John Deere or Kletzkies.
Yeah.
Does Runnings do that?
No, they have, they have owner grade, you know, residential grade moors, I don't think that they stock anything.
Commercial.
Big deal is, they don't service their moors.
Yeah.
Who's this?
Runnings would not service their moors. Same way with Traps supply, they might have them, but they don't service them. I think we want a place that services them.
It's easier, more convenient. Anything else for the budget hearing? Okay, let's wait on that. Lane, are you ready? That will wait for him to get on, uh.
There he is.
Okay.
Yep, you caught me off, off surprise here, I was trying to update computers, so. Uh, yeah, for those of you who remember the pre-disaster mitigation process from the last time, uh, we had some issues with funding from the government since the feds shut down a couple of times during the process and all that, and we got a nasty grant from the state saying we're out of compliance and all of that, but, um, so I'm gonna try to start it early this time. So I'm looking for you guys to authorize me to sign that letter for CCOG. This will enable us to put in an application for a grant in December, find out in twenty twenty-two if we get the money. I will say that those who applied in twenty twenty have still not found out if they've received it or not yet. So it will probably be December of twenty twenty-two before we know, which will give us two years to do the process. So it's due February of twenty twenty-five, so it'll give us plenty of time. And in the past, that met, let's see, I don't have it in front of me, but three thousand something match. And that can be soft match, and these updates have never cost the county any real hard money in the past, so just looking for you guys to let me sign that letter and get the process started.
I'll move to approve and ask the chair to sign for the disaster mitigation plan.
Yeah, Lane signs, I think, Phyllis.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, CCOG, CCOG put my name on it, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
It'll look like a double signature, sorry.
If you can just approve that both of us sign it, because in our policy, I do have to sign all contracts.
Yeah.
And Lane's able to sign it. So if you just wanna amend that, Phyllis, to allow myself and Lane to sign?
I think that was my original.
You had just, I signed.
Oh, okay. Then the chair and our emergency director, Lane, sign it.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Um, I'll actually have Leslie send a copy with that second signature line, then Travis, so.
I'm just making one, I'll just make it an extra line.
Okay, that works, too.
No further discussion, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Nope, not unless you got something for me.
No, thank you. Oh, I do have, have you heard anything from FEMA on the ditch?
Um, we got a letter, I thought. Didn't we get something from Poppin?
I don't remember seeing anything.
Hopefully the letter said they changed their mind.
Uh, let's see, August twenty-fifth, okay, I don't know that we've gotten anything. August twenty-fifth, Jim Poppin, who's from here, uh, asked, asked me who, who the chair was and made sure they had a correct address. So I assume that means something is being sent, but whether or not you've received it, I don't know.
I haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay. Yeah, the, yeah, August twenty-fifth is when I sent in your, well, Travis's name and the correct address, so.
Okay, I would assume with the holiday that.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably true. Yep.
Are there any vouchers, Kerry? See.
No, we didn't have any vouchers this time.
Cybersecurity testing agreement? With the code of state?
Yeah, so do we know who the, the, the list two principal investigators, do we know who they are?
They.
They work for the university?
They work for the university.
Okay.
They're part of their cybersecurity department.
Yeah, that was really my only question. So I move approval.
I would.
Sorry.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Let's have an argument over seconds.
Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mochler.
Yeah.
The WIC contract.
And this contract is not a change in any dollar amounts or any terms. It's an update or a correction to the FAIN number that the state uses to code the money when it comes from the feds. So they just had a typo there and they're correcting it.
So is there two different contracts? Because one says states thirteen thousand eight hundred something, the other one's fourteen? Am I looking at something wrong? There's, the first one says thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty-one. Better word, and then you go down.
I saw that too.
And I, I, I guess I don't.
Um, that might, they usually allow some amount for, um, training and travel. And that might be that, but let me just take a look.
That's the only thing that was thrown at me. I thought maybe I was reading it wrong, but.
They're two different dates.
Yeah.
You know, at the bottom of, so, the thirteen thousand, that was from seven-one to six-thirty twenty-twenty. And the fourteen thousand is from seven-one twenty-twenty to six-thirty twenty-one.
Uh, I wonder if they had the number wrong on both years and they're just correcting it with this.
Yeah.
Because this is the seven-one twenty-twenty-one to six-thirty twenty-twenty-two, it's where the fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Teams gonna come in and.
Okay.
It looks like they're just correcting the both years' contracts with that FAIN number.
Okay. I thought, well, we'll take, we'll take both.
Yeah.
Or like that.
Okay.
Right, then I move approval.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Lockler.
Yes, motion passes. The next Thursday, next Tuesday's meeting, Carrie said she's going to be gone. Wondering if we wanted to move to Thursday, or still hold it, hold it on Tuesday?
I'll be at convention in Rapid City, so.
I won't make.
And I mean, Nicole can certainly take minutes if you still wanna have.
Nicole can still take minutes, too, if we wanna do it on Tuesday.
Yeah, well, Di- Dick, are, are you thinking you will?
I, I, I don't think I'm gonna go.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, there's also a statewide meeting for county commissioners, um, that both of us were thinking about going to. You know.
That's the convention, right?
That's the convention, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with doing it either, either day. And if it's, if it's better for everyone to do it on Thursday, I'm, but, but you won't be able to go on Thursday.
No.
But you would be able to go on Tuesday.
Right.
So.
Stick with Tuesday.
Yeah, maybe we should stick with Tuesday then.
Okay, we'll give Nicole another good workout.
That'll be good for her.
Yeah.
She doesn't mind, it's fine.
So we've got about ten minutes to kill. I'm gonna call recess till nine forty-five.
All right.
We're using that ahead.
We're back in session, uh, it's nine forty-five, we have the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero five. An ordinance creating licensing regulations for medical can- cannabis establishments. Twenty-twenty-one dash zero five.
Sounds a little flippant, but how many times will this change within the next six months?
That's a very good question, and nobody knows the answer to.
I know, but I've thought of.
Ours probably won't change that often, because it'll be, it'll be changing so often, we'll never keep up. So we gotta start somewhere until they get finalized.
That was more for the public realizing this is in motion.
Yeah, it's, it's temporary, at the best.
The phrase I keep using is wet clay, it's gonna get molded.
It's pretty much what we discussed last week, right?
Yeah.
The biggest change is now this, that will cover joint jurisdiction. This will cover joint jurisdiction. We're gonna have separate zoning, joint jurisdiction zoning and county zoning of marijuana. But the, this ordinance is gonna cover both jurisdictions.
We have to pass that though at the joint level, don't we?
No?
Okay.
The city, yeah. Yeah, so you just have the one to do, so it streamlines a lot of stuff for us. So the only other change, well, you guys saw before, was the inclusion of the joint jurisdiction zoning.
Right.
In there as well, that's the only real change.
So, is this the appropriate time to propose an amendment?
Not if we wanna get it in place in time, but.
Yeah, so. So what, what, I, I felt last week, um, as though we were missing a lot of information. Um, and so I, I did a, a little bit of research. Um, and what I looked for were peer-reviewed studies, meaning studies that other, um, uh. You know, that researchers said, yes, this is a good study design, yes. Um, you know, this appears to be new knowledge, right? And so a lot of it was, uh, law enforcement, uh, journals, and some of it was, um, in, um, uh, journals on alcohol and drug abuse. Uh, some of it were studies, uh, that were, um, uh, commissioned by NIDA, the National Institute of Drug Abuse. And so what I was trying to figure out is of all the concerns that we have, um, whi- which of them are critical concerns and which of them are more fears, like, you know, uh, just kind of general fears about the unknown. Uh, and so, you know, because so many states have had medical marijuana in place for many, many years. There is research now, right? So, NIDA study, uh, done by UCLA, uh, said the dis- density of dispensaries is not related to an increase in property or violent crime. In other words, you know, when you use FBI statistics and GIS programs and uh, control for things like, um, uh, you know, the, the, the demographics of the population and the density of the population and so forth. You just don't see dispensaries causing a lot of crime. Denver Police Department, um, looked at burglaries and robberies of dispensaries, and they said that they're on par with pharmacies and lower than banks and liquor stores. Um, Journal of Alcohol and Drug Abuse, uh, there's no relationship between dispensaries and crime. Plus One, P L O S One, which is one of the premier journals, um, uh, out there, said legalizing medical marijuana does not lead to an increase in crime. Um, now, this isn't to say that I didn't see a lot of stuff about, yes, there's an increase in crime. But looking at it, much of it was generated by fear, uh, fears, like concerns, right? So there's one big study that was done, that's often pointed to by people who are against this. Um, but the technique was to interview law enforcement people and say, what are your concerns? And so, yeah, they had, they had a lot of concerns. Um, let's see, um. Yeah, so. So the studies that talk about, like, these big, you know, increases in crime, um, you know, they, they seem to be not peer-reviewed. Um, and based on concerns of police, which I, you know, I mean, I, my husband was a cop for twenty-six years, I get it, right? Um, but, but it does look like it's, it's not the problem, um, that we think it is now. There, there are some concerns for police, one is, um, growhouses. Um, when police go into growhouses without, um, uh, uh, prior notice. Uh, they have had mold and fungus reactions, like allergic reactions to mold and fungus. And, um, there was one electrocution in Canada, somebody, because it was a faulty electrical hookup. So I did find some literature, um, in building inspector, uh, stuff, right? So this is an issue for building inspectors. Um, and, uh, and, you know, one that they have to, have to pay attention to, since they're the ones in charge of seeing that electricity is hooked up, hooked up correctly. For police, uh, one impact has been the call for welfare checks. Uh, like a, you know, health and welfare checkup, like police ask to go to somebody's home because they're not responding. That seems to go up. Um, yeah, and then initially, there was an improvement in the clearance rate for other crimes. Um, and they think that that was probably because police, uh, were spending less time with marijuana arrests. But after an initial period, that seemed to, uh, seemed to not, not be happening anymore. So, that, that seemed to be temporary, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say. Um, police do have concerns about training, um, and they have concerns about driving under the influence. The concerns about driving under the influence are this. Um, not that there's a lot of incidents, there aren't, right? So alcohol continues to be the bulk of driving under the influence, um, issues. But police don't have good, a good way, I mean, alcohol, you can, you can do the nystagmus test, you can you know, do the walk the line test, you can do a breathalyzer, you can do a lot of things right on the street. But, um, for marijuana, the only thing that really works is a blood test. So, you know, so, so, so that's an issue, and states have not quite caught up yet. Um, so, so, so DUIs, um, although it's a very, very small number. Um, you know, there, there is this concern that law enforcement has, that we need to develop some kind of a street test. Um, so. Um, and, and, and so these, by the way, that, that, that little set of concerns came from the National Criminal Justice Rest, Ref- Reference Service. And it was from Washington State, which was one of the early, early adopters. So, I guess what I see, um, is that, uh, you know, that I'm, I'm not sure that this is the big problem, um, for law enforcement, that we're, we're making it out to be. In most states, it runs, it runs pretty, pretty smoothly. Um, you know, we're a small jurisdiction. Um, there, there was one study that said, um, there's no increase in crime around dispensaries, but there were mild increases in crime, um, small increases in crime, um, outside. Like, or in, in rings around dispensaries. My guess, um, and nobody really knows, but my guess is that that's related to who lives around dispensaries, because those are high. Um, you know, they, they, in many places, they're urbanized areas, and generally, the dispensaries are built in. You know, they're not built in the fancy downtowns, right? They're built, um, often in, in industrial parks. So that's, that's what I learned. Um, and, uh, I, you know, so, so with that in mind, um, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance, um, to permit, um, growers uh, in the county, um, you know, and, and, and for agricultural um, uh, organizations, for family farms. Um, the cost of land, um, to either develop a grow house or, um, an alarmed, uh, and, uh, secure field, outdoor field uh, is a lot cheaper in, um, outlying areas than it is in the city. You know, if you wanna build in the city, you've got to, you absolutely have to build indoors. Um, land is very expensive, um, building an indoor grow house is extremely expensive. But for farmers farther out, um, it's actually quite a reasonable proposition. And it's a very high, um, profit, profit business. And, um, so I, I, I would like to, uh, make a motion, um, to allow initially, five dispensaries, um, five manufacturing facilities and five, um, uh, growing facilities in the county. And I'm not surprised there's no second.
I have a motion.
It's okay, Travis, you don't have to wait any longer.
Giving it its due diligence.
Yeah.
I get it.
Uh, the motion's gonna die for lack of second. So I'm gonna open it to the public, if there's any public comment on the ordinance.
The research that you did regarding law enforcement and their concern, I think is very important. Um, whether now is the time for putting that amendment in, and I, I can't comment on that. But I do know, from an agriculture point of view, I mean, I've been production agronomist for almost fifty years now. And this is an exciting time for me, um, with a, a new crop in, um, outside production, which a lot of people don't understand. Um, that's where you can get certainly the cheapest product. Um, and, um, it doesn't require as much intensity as a, as a grow house would. You know, where you've got expensive lights and all of that stuff. Um, and I don't know how this would affect, because if I remember right, Drew, in your um, in your, um, comments that you put together there, you kind of addressed, uh, an outside grow facility. Um, so it is, it is kinda covered. And, um, my purpose in being here today is to let you know, to let the county commissioners know of what our intentions are at this time, is an outside grow of hemp. Which would be registered with the state of South Dakota. And, uh, we think we have access to a, um, distiller which basically takes the oil out. Um, and I've had a lot of experience with that, with sunflowers over the last fifty years. Sunflowers and safflower and canola and all of those oil seed crops, so I have an understanding there. But it's also important for us to know that the county supports this crop and the future of this crop. Um, and that, um, we realize that medical products from an outside grow are considerably cheaper. And would be very beneficial to people in need of medical, you know. But we also wanna make it public known here that, as this proceeds, uh, we want to be able to have a license to grow. If we do medical marijuana, as opposed to CBD hemp. Totally different here, but nonetheless, we envision having a distill, a, a dispensary uh, with medical marijuana products in addition to what we're gonna be doing with hemp CBD oil, okay? So that's the reason that I'm here. And I really appreciate what Drew has done. And how beneficial that's gonna be to rural Clay County, and also to vets that are you know, in need of medical assistance, and, um, people that are low-income people who have need for the medical here, but can't afford, you know, an expensive. We, we wanna help. but can't afford, you know, an expensive, we want to help people, okay? So that's probably all I had. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam. Any other public comments?
Speak up before, but my name is Josh Scher and I represent Thirds Media. We're a consulting company here in Colorado, or here in South Dakota, my base is Colorado. And we've been working with a few different firms in Colorado, Sharp Solutions and a few others that would like to come up here. So if there is anything that the city needs or the commissioners would need information wise from some people that are a part of Normal, a few other groups, I think you guys also have them up here. But they're a little bit more established and they're trying to come into this area just with the, you know, the potential of this industry, especially here being in a tri-state area. They're really interested. And so we're kind of trying to help facilitate it. So I guess it would just be our announcement that we're, we're here to try and help out as much as we can. And anybody who has a name from, has any questions, that sort of thing, we, we're, we're available, so.
When, when you say come into this area, what do you mean?
So they're, they're wanting to, one, either invest into people who are here or into the community itself. Some of the groups just want to help with legislative purposes. Some of them want to be able to come in and help logistical. Sharp Solutions is one of them, Amy Sharp is the owner, or one of the owners, there's two of them. And they deal with transportation logistics, outside storage, inside, that sort of thing. And they're, they, they want to help kind of move cities away from some of the stigmatism of, of what has been seen when it first gets started, especially in smaller areas that aren't used to maybe some of the city ordinances, that sort of thing that Colorado first had to fight with. So they have a lot of experience in that industry. And so if there was, I guess, that's about it.
Yeah, can, can you tell us a little bit about, I mean, I, I, I know our sheriff, Andy Howes, is deeply concerned and you know, I, I get it. Can you tell us how Colorado has dealt with the kinds of problems that our sheriff is worried about?
You know, I don't know if this time I would want to make that statement, because I don't, I don't know exactly all of the issues I've seen. I've, I've read some of them. I know each city in Colorado dealt with different things, depending on where is that? Whether it's an industrial area or more of a residential area. So every area had its issues. You mentioned some of the issues with law enforcement worrying about what they had to deal with. And being from Colorado, a lot of the dispensaries, they are in areas that were previously not great. And to be honest, those areas are now doing very well. Five points is a, as a point of reference for me. They put in like five, five or six distill or dispensaries there. And my dad had a shop there last 25 years. And you didn't leave, you didn't leave any part of your building without double checking it. And now it's a really nice area, they've redone it all, and it's kind of regentified the area. And I don't know if that's directly because of the tax revenue, I would bet it is from my understanding. But so they had issues in those areas, I know, start with. But I also think that's because of noticing the things that were going on in that area more often, because the patrols were asked to be in those areas more often than others. So that area got a higher density of arrests in, in those times. But now it's, you know, it's not the same, at least from what I've, I've heard. I do know one of the groups that, her name is Ashley Weber. She's one of the members and co-founders of Normal in Colorado. She's been invested with it most of her life. She allows a lot more about it on, on this level. And she's offered to either talk via Zoom or even mention, or talk with anybody individually if, 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 if you guys were interested in that.
Yeah, so sadly, from the commission's perspective, we don't gain any money from sales tax. We are entirely property tax based. You know, in terms of the dollars we collect, which is why counties have such a struggle fixing roads and bridges and so on. Because we, we don't have, so how, do you know anything about how in Colorado the property tax base was affected? In other words, does land become more valuable once it's developed?
I don't know, I know that the area around the dispensary and one specifically, I know of down on Peoria in Colorado, just because I, I know the area very well. The property value in that area did increase quite a bit. But they also put a lot of money into the area after, after about two years after the, we had the three dispensaries move in. And they're, they're, you know, they're 500 feet apart in some areas. So that, I'm guessing, has something to do with that. So I don't know if it directly affected it, but I could ask and see what kind of information I can find on that.
But those are the cities, correct?
Yes.
So we don't, we don't have anything to do with the city Vermillion.
Yeah.
Where everything outside.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, as far as surrounding properties, still gonna be farm around.
Yeah, oh, I see, oh, yeah.
There'd be no more, you know, you could add commercial to it possibly, but as far as the farm ground being more expensive.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting, because I know, I know farmers have to put, put money into creating a grow area.
Yeah.
And so I would assume that that would increase the value of that acreage that was protected in that way. I mean, that would be an interesting question.
Depends on what they do. If they, if they just put a fence and lights, it doesn't increase property value.
No.
Since Nick and I are surrounded by commercial industrial property against ag property.
Hit the button, please. You're almost here.
Let's get a chair over there, Sam.
Yeah.
I've got an idea, you'll probably be speaking a little more.
Good question on tax revenues. If in rural Clay County, there is a outside grow facility like we're talking about, and, and it's profitable, then we certainly would expect taxes that would go up and would follow, you know, would, no?
No, they, they wouldn't.
They wouldn't, okay. Well, then I will add the fact that we've known Josh and his team for a number of years now because of our produce and the restaurant business that he was involved with. And so because of his Colorado experience, we're in the process of talking with his team about helping us in the future. First of all, with CBD hemp production. And then hopefully, medical marijuana as well. And who knows what's gonna happen about recreational, that's so encumbered politically. So, yeah. We hope that we can continue to pursue this with the help of Josh's team.
I invited him here and I thought it would be relevant for you to listen to somebody from Colorado before they came here.
I think part of our law must be based on Carroll Rattle Law, because I did notice that in the state statute, at least, there's one reference to Colorado law in the very last section rather than South Dakota. So I, I think we copied, we probably copied some of our verbiage from that, at least in the statute. In, in Colorado, you're, you've got some experience apparently in the dispensaries also in grow at all, or?
I, I personally do not, most of my information, or most of my knowledge has come in the last year just being involved with some people who found out about what's going on here and then them reaching out to me based off of the contacts that I have. And so most of my information is coming as we're, as we're building also. So I've got pre-knowledge, but most of what we offer, I think, is the groups that we've been in contact with that have been up here working with South Dakota already and, and the capital and in other ways. But, but dispensary would be a little bit more of our, our knowledge. Indoor grow ups, we've, we've worked with a little bit of, or a couple of companies with how they've gone about what they're doing now. But the startup of it's not, not necessarily something that we were involved with back in Colorado when that happened, so we're just kind of coming into it.
Dick, I might add, when I was in peer lobbying in January and in February, I met pretty much all the players that were involved lobbying for cannabis, marijuana, whatever. And several of those people were South Dakota people that ended up in Colorado or California or Oregon, Washington, and came back to South Dakota with those expertise in production and marketing and dispensing and growing, whether it's inside or outside. So I've got several people that I consult with on that. And it's pretty valuable for us to have access to people that have had years of experience. You know, even like Colorado, they went through all the growing pains, you know? But they kind of got things worked out and things are kind of working pretty good now. And we want, we want to copy that. We, we want to be able to say we learned from them and we kind of want to do it right from the beginning, so that's why we're here, okay?
How many years has Colorado been up and running?
Yeah, you know, they struggled for the what, first two or three years? And then they kind of started getting, yeah, eight years.
It's the last few years and the, the groups that have taken hold there, that helped regulate a lot of it, have made a lot of the difference in the last four to five years. And I think a lot of the things that a lot of the other states can copy paste from is what they've developed in the last four or five years.
Yeah, so here, here's a Forest Service study that looks at what happened in California and in rural areas. And property values of undeveloped land went up three to 4%. So that's undeveloped land. I guess my theory was that when somebody developed the land, it would become more valuable because of the, the expense. And, and also the fact that, you know, if somebody wants to get out of the business of growing, there's always a buyer. So that pushes property values up. But the Forest Service, the federal Forest Service study suggests that property values in the entire county, the rural county go up by three to 4%. And, and they theorize that that's because, you know, the land just becomes more valuable because it can grow.
And is that in areas that have multiple licenses available?
Yeah, so it's, let's see, rural, yeah. So what they looked at was a, a large Humboldt County, California, largest cannabis producing county in the country and home to the most productive and recrea- and recreational rural lands. And they're also kind of looking at, okay, so how does this affect the price for other, other uses of forests and, and land? Yeah, so they're looking at the land's productive capacity as well as the, you know, sort of the presence, they call it potential disamenities. But obviously, what they're, they're talking about is sort of the stigma attached to to land. And so they, their results suggest that a doubling of the median existing cannabis density in a watershed is associated with a 3% to 4% increase in the sales price of undeveloped land. So, you know, there, there may be more, but that's the one I just pulled up when.
Just for curiosity, if I did pull up that cannabis, medical marijuana has been legal or was voted what, up in November of 2000? So it's been 20 plus years that they've been working on it.
Well, and, you know, and I don't know if it affects decisions on, on, on anything. But with the licensing, the lower, the, the, the harder it is to get in this area, the more expensive it's gonna be. And, you know, in Colorado, you go into one area, you're paying $125 for, for something, and then another area you're paying $75. Significantly different, same exact companies, they're just getting from local areas. And if you're in Denver, it's gonna be higher because of Denver. But if you separate yourself from, say, Littleton Centennial and some of those other areas, the cost goes up when you're, when you're, and you can't get a hold of it. And so if we're buying from other counties, it's gonna go up. And then the other county is gonna get the money because of their, the way that you have to purchase it. So that county will get the money. So if we are shooting kind of low on what we're allowing for grow and dispensary, we're shooting lower for also city tax revenue. And so, you know, just in, in favor of what you were saying, or, you know, to put something into it. I think it's beneficial because people are gonna come here versus other counties if it's cheaper. And if, you know, Vermillion kind of sticks with how it's been, I mean, I think that's feasible and so.
But I don't know how many licenses Vermillion is allowing.
Yeah.
Because that'll be separate from ours.
Yeah, yeah.
But then we're also allowing four in the county that the sheriff's department would be responsible for.
For?
Dispensers. Because you'd have one in Irene, one in La Conda, one, one in the rural county, and one in our joint jurisdiction.
That would be the minimal allowable by state law.
Well, yes, right now, that's what we would be. That's what, that's what I'm contemplating, our sheriff's department. The potential, day one, they could have four. Plus, they would have to back up the city Vermillion if there was a response to anything.
And, and I guess
This covers joint jurisdiction as well.
Right, but there'll be one in joint jurisdiction.
The one license would be available for county and joint jurisdiction.
Yes, but I mean, there can be a dispensary in joint jurisdiction and a dispensary in the county. And one in La Conda and one in Irene, because they're each their own legal jurisdiction. So one has to be allowed in each one. So if one is, if one is built in each one, that's four that the sheriff has to worry about from day one.
Yeah, and I, I guess the argument I'm trying to make is that all the data suggests that the sheriff doesn't have to worry as much as we were afraid he would have to worry. You know, I, I'm just not seeing data that suggests crimes, any kind of crime increase because of dispensaries. It's just, it's just not there. And I, you know, so, so I, I think we're sort of implying that the minimum number is the best. And I'm suggesting that maybe that's not the best.
But why do we have to have so many? I mean, why do we have to allow one on every street corner? We're a small county. Even if the county didn't allow any, Vermillion's only at the most for most people in the county or for some people, 25 minutes away.
Yeah, so we don't ask this question for pharmacies. You know, so, so.
There's one in the county, or two, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, three, because Walmart, Ivy and Davis.
Yeah.
And they're all in the city of Vermillion. But yet, everybody seems to be able to get their prescriptions.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm, I'm suggesting is that I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that very tight non-permissive legislation serves our community well.
I, I understand where Betty's coming from, but I feel at, this is not the point to expand the numbers. We are just trying to figure out even what one requirement, one place of each type requirements will need. And once we have those in place, we, and feel comfortable, then we could expand the numbers. But I don't feel at all comfortable expanding numbers at this time.
I'd also add that from the relationship between the county commissioners and Sheriff Andy, it's important that he has a full amount of information from other areas regarding issues that did or did not occur that caused more load on the sheriff. And I, I think you would be correct in saying that this is less of an issue than what Andy first reacted and said, oh, no, we don't want that, or we don't want this, or I don't want to do that. I think it's maybe less of an issue there.
When did I ever say that?
I don't, I never.
I hear a little bit too much about what I said and what I want without being asked these questions. If you have a question, I'd appreciate if you ask it rather than quote me when I haven't said these things.
I'm sorry about that, Andy. Yep. Point taken.
Josh, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Said the wrong name.
Sorry.
Excuse me. So when you're out in Colorado, you haven't had any experience with outside growers, that growers that grew it on the outside?
I have not personally, no. I have, we do have people that we're talking with and working with that have, but I personally have not.
So is it, so what you do know, is it all organic?
What do you say, ask again?
Is it, is the growers that you do know that are outside, is it all organic?
Uh, the only company that I have personal connection with it is, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Could see that could be, that's, that's a hard issue in the county too. We know that. We, we have a couple of organic growers of, of others. Things like corn based, so what, so hard. And I know that's a big issue. We've had some, some consequence it is. So it makes it really tough. If you want to pick like, if I pick a spot out in my farm, well, I don't know how many of you guys familiar, familiar with Dicamba, you've probably heard it. It's a product that drifts and they've had some issues this last year, last two or three years. And that would certainly be an issue with, that would come up with organics. If I went out there and planted some in one area, it'd be awful difficult to, it, that's makes it hard for the farmer to go out there, pick out like 10 acres and plant. What you're doing, Sam, I applaud you, but it's not going to be easy. I know that.
We know that too.
Yeah. Cause because of the, of those things.
But if you have a good relationship with your neighbors.
Right.
And they understand the risk of chemical trespass. Then everybody kind of avoids potential trespassing, I guess.
I get that. But I can show you a field that we planted some soybeans in this last year. And we never played, sprayed anything with Dicamba. Our neighbors did not spray anything with Dicamba. And no, it didn't do that. It covered the whole field. It used to be able to drift. Yes, it did. And it's, and we'd have no idea where it came from. It could be miles away. So I'm just saying that just because you have good relationships with your neighbors, which we did, doesn't necessarily mean, and, and I sprayed Dicamba too. So I know what it's like. You follow the rules and regulations, you're probably all right. But you still don't know, well, on any of this stuff that how it fits.
Well, and chemical trespass is also a, is one to prove.
Yes.
It is.
It's a gray area.
We're going to try our best to, you know, have certified organic and it's only a 10 acre thing, but you know, we're protected by understanding neighbors to the, to the west and to the north.
Microphone.
We're going to continue to pursue the organic because we think that adds value in the medical arena.
Then as far as growing, it's organic is easy with him or medical, such an invasive.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Yeah.
It might not be affected by some of the chemicals that are used on the other.
What Sam might be doing, you know, won't affect what, you know, how you grow it, it's the neighbor's garden.
Right.
I mean, you won't get taken over by weeds.
We have some unique practices that I've learned in organic. You've heard about the cover crops that are going in, in the fall. And then the research has shown where they go in in the spring when the cover crops is about this tall and they roll or crimp it down and then seed into that cover, which does a lot for weed control and moisture control and keeping the ground cool. It also helps to feed the soil microorganisms as they chew through that organic matter that they're breaking down. So it's, it's kind of a, a unique process. It, it's labor intensive. I mean, obviously it's very labor intensive. But the potential income from that certified organic crop, I can afford to hire some labor.
So this is Alexis. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of points. One, I would say that I think it's good to keep this moving forward with the anticipation that this is going to be updated. I mean, our ordinance is going to be updated. And I don't think that we frequently go into things with that thought because we want to get our final product down and out there. But in this situation, given what we're working with, it's good to get something in place and then work to hone that and modify it and, and improve upon it going forward. As you look to do that in the future, a couple of things to be aware of. From partly for my sake, if we can, as we talk about grows, if we can adopt the term cannabis cultivation facility, I think that would be good. Because that's, if you're looking to update the ordinance in the future, that's the terminology from statute. So when we look at those four medicinal cannabis facilities, that is the technical term that we're going to look to. Yes, yes. So that would be something that you would look to add some additional information about. Couple of other things to keep in mind as you look to do that. Right now, of course, this could change, but that 116 pages of Department of Health Regulations require that a cannabis cultivation facility be in greenhouse form.
No, no, it's not right.
Okay. When did that come out? Because this is the, that's, so I've got the July 27th. Because that's my concern is how one, so when we were, I actually felt better about the fact that it was going to be in greenhouse form. Because when we look at all those security requirements, it doesn't distinguish between the four different types. So when we look at the facility itself, having to adhere to all those security requirements with. So that's 06. I mean, I know that it talks about fences and greenhouses here, and I just need to. We've got 449506. So they've updated that section. So it does say any cultivation facility cultivating, processing or storing cannabis outdoors. I guess it does say or in greenhouses. So my apologies on that. But everything else contemplates that. And I actually think the greenhouse thing would be easier to manage. I know it'd be a cumbersome nightmare probably from a, a growing standpoint. But I don't know how someone is going to, I mean, some of the things that were specifically discussed here today as concerns could potentially be mitigated through requirement of greenhouse. Now that's on the state level as far as what they're going to do with that. But I think, I, I think it will be very difficult for even an operation to maintain all these requirements about security without some type of enclosure. And it says fencing, but man, even, even the, the concerns that were raised here today, I just thought through a greenhouse aspect of things would be potentially easier to manage. I don't know if, you know, you can't prevent everything through the soil traveling, depending on where you're located. But, and then, and then the final thing then just, I, I wanted to mention was as we look at those things, we've already improved upon our language, I think from where we started with contemplating, you know, we had some language in there that you can't have more than one establishment at the same locale, and that's been improved upon. Now by state statute, the only facility that you're not going to be able to locate all in one location then is a testing facility. But I think we discussed why that's, that's not a bad thing. And right now then that's not contemplated being authorized. But otherwise, you know, it says however, co-location of cannabis establishments under common ownership shall be allowed on the same location. So we've already got some language crafted into this draft that's going to provide for that. If you choose to update and go from one to five or whatever you look at in there. And then it's, it becomes a matter of what you're going to authorize to do that. So there's some framework already in place that's contemplating expansion upon this in the future, if you so choose. And there's just a couple, the cultivation facility language is what we would really need to then improve upon if that was something that you wanted to, to add in conjunction with. So we'd need some provisions about that. We'd need to update the numbers naturally of things, but. And then right now, is it just general industrial and commercial? So that's, that's what Drew's indicating. Yes. That's what, how I wrote this to you, a conditional use permit within the locations of general industrial and commercial. So if you wanted something located elsewhere, you'd want to contemplate that as well.
Several visits with group as a, an experienced production agronomist in the organic arena, the addition of outside cultivation is the key for me. Knowing how much more expensive it is with greenhouses. Yeah, you can, you know, off season, you can do things in a greenhouse, but, and we're going to do that at another location. But that is the key for us to be able to pursue an outside production system. Path of least resistance, least amount of cost, just pretty labor intensive.
And, and I don't doubt that for a second. But from a theft of products standpoint, I just think it will be harder to manage. And the security camera requirements, the report of loss of, or theft of product and all the other security requirements that come in, and that isn't county, that's state statute and Department of Health regs.
I also might add, knowing that three years ago, hemp became legal across the country. Therefore, outside production of hemp, which usually is in a four by four square. So they're like little Christmas trees, you know, four foot here, four foot here, four foot here, four foot here. So it's a pretty low population. And the demand, how do I say this? Since it has to have a very small amount of THC, the, the demand for that is much, much less than say a high THC product that, you know, it's, it's a drug that you got to be pretty careful with, you know. So having a security fence with motion detectors and lights. I mean, we're certainly not going to have a armed guard there all 24 hours a day like they did in, in Colorado where they had high THC stuff and, you know, there was some gunplay involved and some people got shot. But I don't see that issue at all in our future personally. Thank you.
You're scaring us, Sam. You're, you're scaring us by mentioning that. Now, my own, my, my own perception of the risk is like in dispensaries and manufacturing facilities and testing facilities, I, I do view the risk as being similar to a pharmacy. I think that's realistically the kind of risk you got. And you do have, I, I don't know what our history here is for bash and runs from, from our existing pharmacies. I, I really don't have any idea of that, or even, even in surrounding communities. But that's my view for those types of facilities that that was, that's our similar risk with similar security measures taken. I know that in driving through Colorado, I've seen dispensaries that I could tell that what they were by their signage. And man, that looks like a, looks like a single cell prison. You have iron bars on the windows and the whole smear. Now, I know that that's probably not even normal, but I have seen in just driving through the state, I have seen such facilities. Is that pretty normal for there?
Yeah, depends on the area. A lot of the places now have moved to glass that has the mesh inside of it instead of the bars, just because of that image. But yeah, I definitely have still seen those in certain areas, mainly grow houses, that sort of thing. They're a little bit more protective. The dispensaries, I don't think they have as many people trying to break into them. Just one, they're pretty well locked up. I mean, but you know, say I, I, we were at Brickhouse for five years. We got broken into all the time. You know, people just trying to steal wine. And so, I mean, that, that doesn't help or, or say anything. But I think all the industries that we regulate have the potential.
Sure.
And medical, I think, especially medical, I don't think that has as much of an idea of theft behind it as recreational. Like, no, that's not to say that that's a bad idea either, but I think that it's not as big of an issue as, as I've definitely heard a lot of people talk about it, fear of it. And I don't think people should be scared of it. I think just something, another business to be taken care of. And I think that's, that's about as, as big of a fear as, as a public should take from it.
Sure. And is any security measures mandated by state or localities? Or is it mainly taken as individual enterprises to reduce their own losses?
No, they're, they're regulated quite a bit on, on the security measures, the kind of glass that they have to have. How many people inside of this dispensary at a time? Just about everything is very good. Same, same as I was reading through some of the stuff that you guys had in the state.
And that's what I, my next question was to be, how similar is that to our own statute and rules?
That's, it's a little heavier there, I think. But I think as these, as this ordinance changes, I think this, the, the security side of it will be more specific. The things that you would do as a business to keep it secure though, wouldn't be that much further than what you would choose to regulate it as. I just know that they do have a security commission that's in charge of, and I can't remember the, 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 the name of it right now, but they regulate out of the safety for the businesses who don't think about regulating it the right way, you know? So in Brickhouse, we, we double lock the doors or something like that, you know? So you, you do what you have to do to protect your stuff. Some insurance companies also regulate it, how, how you're going to do things. I mean, I don't know. Now there's some insurance companies that do it, but they didn't use to insure it. So. So yeah, I, I think it's just based off of common practices for security measures for a high dollar item.
Well, I guess at the state level, maybe at our level, we, we should be looking at those more stringent characteristics that are practiced in Colorado.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to start that way. I mean, it might be irritating for some, but if it helps reduce the, the, the worries, I think that's a very important thing to, to, to put more on that side of it than to be worried about it.
Now, moving on to the cultivation facilities, what's the third word? I'm missing a word there. Cannabis cultivation facilities. There again, you know, in thinking in terms of risk analysis that I kind of feel an analog of, of Sam, say if Sam had medical marijuana on his property and it's in a fenced area, you know, the analog that I immediately kind of jumped to is, is copper theft in the, out in the country. It's the value of the product that's being pilfered is what drives the activity to have unauthorized distribution of our product, for instance, versus what they can sell copper for on the, on the open market and somebody pilfering out in the country, copper can, can make, make a lot of money doing that. The higher the value of your product, the more risk there is. And you're telling me it's a pretty high value product. So you're telling me that you should, that we should be thinking in terms of an appropriately high level of security. And that security maybe include response time of where the, where the growth facility or the cannabis cultivation facilities, the value of what a person could run in and, and in 10 minutes gather up $1,000 worth of product, or maybe it's $10,000. That, that determines how high of security you should be interested in. And we should be interested in having you employ.
I agree.
So where are we at? Say if a guy went in to grab, had 10 minutes to gather up materials and get out before the sheriff shows up. What kind of value do you, would you speculate that a person could, could grab in that kind of time?
Could be higher than 10,000.
Okay.
Which we don't have time to play today.
Yeah.
No.
We're just doing the manufacturing.
Right, but but that's that gets to the to the end of this is that one of the reasons that we're. Were asking for. The ordinance as drafted now, just a dispensary and zero on the others. Is that that gives us time to learn about this? And it's way easier to open a door than to to close it regulatory wise. And that's part of the reason that that it reads as it is today. And we'd like to get it done quickly. We need to get this this gone through, and that's why there was no second to Betty's. It's not that we're. We're expecting that even. In a matter of months that we would not increase the number of of. Facilities that that we would authorize. But right now, we we want to be able to be very careful. At least now I'm speaking for myself, I'm using editorial we we when I shouldn't be. But I'm I'm thinking we need to be very careful at this point. And even in a in months times, not. Years that we can open a few more of those doors that would be advantageous both to the industry into our public. Off the soapbox.
So this is dispensaries and manufacturing?
Correct, I know.
Okay, well, you said we're not allowing the other three.
Well, we're, yes. Yes, excuse me.
Proposing to allow two of the four.
And so so one of one other comment, it shows up on page thirty-four of the document that was sent to us. On Friday and under C. Numbers one and two are pretty much identical. It I I don't know, it looks almost like a typo or something. Number one says no cannabis manufacturing facility may share any physical location with any other type of business or land use type. And then number two says may not share any physical location with any other business or land use type.
Betty's right, it is a typo. And I'm sure there's many, but.
Yeah, I think that's the only one, Drew. Good job.
There was an exception, I think, in there on that.
Thinking there was too.
Yeah, there was something about approval from.
Yeah, we did. And so I think what we did was we changed it, but then it made the two identical.
Okay.
Right? So that so, yeah, yeah, yeah. I I mean, I I I understand that would happen. Yeah, yeah. I I, yeah, I understand. We 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 actually got rid of part of number two. Which made it identical to number one.
Which page was that on, Betty?
Um, so looking at this this week's. Backup material, it was thirty-four. Page thirty-four.
It's under section nine.
Correct.
C, yeah. And it's numbers one and two that are. But yeah, I I, you know, I. Yeah, I'm I I'm prepared to move move ahead on this. You know, with everybody's assurances that this is not the final product, that this is a framework that we'll use. As, you know, and and that in the coming months, there will be, there will be changes. That will allow. People in. Our county who want to participate in this industry be able to do it.
Yeah, I I need to apologize to both Drew and you all because those those couple of things that I pointed out last week. I was going to get back to Drew. He asked me to get back to him and I failed to do that, so, sorry.
So is the manufacturing, is that allowed in the same facility as dispensary?
Anything but testing can coexist. Yeah, testing can't coexist with any other of the types of facilities, but each of the others may.
Yeah, and indeed in California, that's a pretty typical setup is to do actually growing manufacturing and a dispensary in the same building.
Yeah, you don't you don't allow the the ref into your puddle, I guess.
So it has nothing to do with this ordinance?
Right. I think that's correct.
Is is the is the grow facility, is that under the Department of Health?
Yes.
It is also. So it's not considered agriculture?
Travis, is your mic on?
Yeah, I just leaned back. I just asked him if the. Grow facility is under the Department of Health or the Department of Ag? It's under the Department of Health. So I'm wondering if they're considering the grow facility agriculture, and that's just for our ordinance benefit.
Good question.
Yeah, in, at least in the statute, everything refers to Department of Health.
Yeah.
None of it.
It's all under the Department.
None of it, none of it refers to Department of Ag. And I gotta confess that I didn't read carefully enough the rules, S D A R part of it yet. But statute, which is the primary law, there is no no reference, no cross reference there.
I did hear the first part of that, but I do know when I was in Peter Locky, I did spend some time with.
Hunter.
Hunter, that's right. He looks just like his grandma. Anyway.
Microphone, please.
The only involvement that I understand that the South Dakota Department of Agriculture had. Had to do with establishing insurance on hemp production. Crop insurance, like federal crop insurance with a federally approved crop. That's all I know.
Oh, there's an entirely different set of rules for hemp production, and I think part of that may be under Department of Ag.
That's under the Department of Ag.
Correct.
But cannabis cultivation is under the Department of Health.
Yep.
So it's not considered agriculture today.
And there is also some involvement with Department of Revenue.
Well, I'm sure.
Collect that money. It might start there, then go to health.
So that means that. Medical marijuana. That you would have to end up and rezone that piece of ground, correct, to grow it?
That depend on how we'd want to do it. The only reason I'm asking is because agriculture is a permitted, a permitted use.
Right.
So we've got to. We've got to put something in there that says there's a licensing, even if it wasn't at the Department of Ag. But it's not just a permitted use, it's a licensed.
Right.
But if it's under the Department of Health, it doesn't fall under our ordinance of. Permitted uses.
So but if I want to grow medical cannabis. I have to not be ag, then I have to be rezone something else, correct?
We can allow it in the ag district. Which would be under ag ground.
Okay.
It's just what what is a permitted use and what's a non-permitted use and what's a licensed use.
Right.
In the ag district.
In.
But if it fell under agriculture, fell under the Department of Ag, it would be allowed already.
Right.
Which we want to be, we want a license for it and know where they're at, so we don't really want it to just blanket cover there. But since it's under the Department of Health, it's not a permitted permitted use today. In our ordinance, so.
And I think when I've asked Sam about this. Your ten acres is not adjacent to like semi-light industrial. Or. But it is nutrients, heavy industrial. It's adjacent to that, right? So it's an adjacent use. Right? So it could be fairly easy for him to change that, even being in in joint jurisdiction.
He wouldn't have to change it.
He wouldn't have to, no.
No, I just, what my concern was that come October fourth, when this is legal. That people are going to assume that, well, just because you don't have a license in place, it's under agriculture and agriculture is permitted use. Which it's not under agriculture right now. So they can't just do it.
What he's getting at is how they could grow it anywhere and everywhere, no regulations, it's all hearsay. Or where it's under the medical.
Medical.
For health, I mean, it'd be, yeah. It's hip, Sam's all right with it.
Sam's fine, yeah.
Because that's a lot.
And that's exactly why I did it.
Exactly.
I looked at everything and.
I get it. Right.
Get the microphone.
Sorry, you got to punch it first, sorry.
I guess I have a question, Sam, and this is. You said something earlier about that. You would raise the hemp, then later on you would do something in a greenhouse?
Yes, I have a greenhouse there. Is this on or off? It's on, right? Okay, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now.
We had a greenhouse at one time, a smaller greenhouse that was associated with our CSA. Where we would add another two months in the fall and another two months earlier in the spring, you know, cold tolerant. Okay, so anyway, and. My part-time job working with a. Certified organic farm up at Clark. We have plans for both outside and inside growing up there. And depending on how things go with the medical marijuana. And what happens with. Recreational, we may at some time, because those products then almost require so much more, they're so much more valuable. A secure inside grow house. Whether we'll do that or not depends on how other things, you know, fall out, you know. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I because I guess I what I was getting at is, so would that require us at that time? I mean, I'm jumping ahead, it has nothing really to do with this, but. Is would that require us to have to Sam to have two licenses? It would, wouldn't it? If he if he had.
Yeah, very specifically, yes.
Grow house, grow place, and he also had the greenhouse, it would be two licenses, correct? If I read this right.
Not if they're on the same facility. If they're on the same site, if they're on separate sites, yes.
No, it's the same site.
Okay, well, then he'd be all right.
So right now, I'm gonna need to be registered with the state with hemp production. But if the door opens of opportunity for us to do medical marijuana, then we'll pursue that.
Right.
And if we're able to receive a dispensary. For medical and or possibly recreational, then we will we'll do that as well. Each of those requires separate licenses, right?
You enroll in the dispenser.
Yeah, yeah. That's the way we see it at this time.
Okay.
I'm consulting with Josh on this, getting his opinion. Thank you.
So we need a motion on this?
We just have to set the date for the second reading.
Second, okay.
Do we have that date set already?
No.
The readings just have to be five days apart, so you.
Excuse me?
You could do it.
Sounds good.
Five days, when does that?
We'll we'll read the second reading next Tuesday. We don't need a motion to move it to the second reading, right, Carrie? Just just got to set the time and date for a second.
Yeah, you just have to set the time and date.
Good deal.
Travis, I've got to cut out for a medical appointment, so.
You just saw grant policy discussion and made an excuse.
Oh, that's mine, I know. It was giving me a heart attack, oh. So have fun, man.
Thanks, thanks.
Thanks, Drew. And Ms. Tracy, on your input. And thanks to our guests, it's been a productive discussion.
So when is the next reading for this?
Next Tuesday.
I haven't been able to find this document that we've been discussing, so I'll try to take a look at it between now and then. I. I was provided with the first version of it, and I commend Sam that he's very aware of it because I haven't been able to find it. To to review this, and my name's come up quite a bit through this discussion as if my opinion matters, but nobody's ever asked me for my opinion on the issue, so.
It's easier if we give it to you.
Yeah, I've I've noticed that. See how it goes, so.
But Carrie, you can send him the document, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Carrie, I'll just email that to you, Andy.
It was in last last week's minutes and slightly amended in this this week's agenda.
Yeah, that's what I was, I've seen the the first version, but I know it's been amended, and so. But in any case, in the future, if you folks are interested in what I think about these issues, you should ask rather than continue to call me throughout the meeting like has been this time.
You sure that the document that he gets has a outside grow?
That's not in this.
Oh, okay.
We're just talking about our ordinance.
This, oh, right, this ordinance.
Yes.
And and the State Department of Health regulations can be found out on their website.
Yes, sorry, Andy, I'm, I didn't realize that you were out of the loop on that, on seeing what the verbiage looked like.
Are we on section six on the property or the grant policy?
Page twenty-three.
You guys want to, you might get pretty bored with what we got left here today. Appreciate you coming, but I don't think you're gonna like it.
Sorry, page twenty-two, section seven.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
But there was a lot of us.
So it looks like in section seven here.
Alright, so. So you're looking at pages of the document? And I'm on page twenty-three, and I see we've got a bunch of changes. That we made under B inventory control management, and it looks like there's no changes past that.
So section seven, B is purchase, purchase methods?
No, no, I'm, let's see, I'm looking for.
It marked on my last or on my paper copy that we left off. Section six, C, we got through that. So then I show that we are starting section seven procurement federal programs.
Yep, that's where I am.
Okay.
And yours shows a lot of changes under. Where where are you?
So, let's see. Yeah, my page numbers probably don't match anybody else's because I've been typing in notes. So I'm I'm still scrolling down, so seven procurement federal programs, I don't see any changes in that. That's the first one that I don't see changes in.
Right, and that's where we're at.
Oh, no, okay, wait, I do see a change.
Then micro purchases, there's changes. Publicly solicited sealed competitive bids, I see changes. Competitive proposals, I see changes. Contract cost and price, I'm looking. Yeah, that's where it looks like the changes end in contract cost and price. I show a lot of things that, between Lexi and I, that we noted in those sections. I don't know that we've gone through them as. Okay. Okay, yeah, it could be just.
Okay, so let's make this simple. Section seven procurement. A, anything, anything there? Responsibility for purchasing?
I didn't have anything in that section.
Okay, B, purchase methods?
I didn't have anything in that section either.
We're just getting to the, the shell part.
Right, the shell part with Lexi's note.
Yeah. Contract should be reviewed.
That's right. I, I would way rather see that. I, I mean, I, that would give me a lot more confidence. So change the shell, the shit, got it.
Now, the next paragraph for two, there's an underlined, identified is underlined?
I think that was just a grammatical thing that the computer's tricking.
Oh, yeah.
That there's, they're questioning that terminology.
Okay. And then there's a big highlight on, for purpose of this procedure, small purchase procedures. It's just referencing the state bid laws anyway, correct? So it's not.
Right. So then in that section, because the state bid statutes do occasionally change, should we just put something that references state bid statutes and keep it general?
That way, if there's changes, we don't have to change ours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that that's changed in how long.
Hmm, I think they bumped it up to 50,000 a few years ago, but I mean, the state bid statutes get quite a bit more in-depth than the 25 and the 50, because then they have things for capital improvements that are a different amount. Might be just as easy to keep it simple and reference the state.
So then under publicly seal, solicited sealed competitive bids, the last half of the sentence, other than professional services, not required for bid letting process? Did you want that struck, Alexis, or?
So I wanted to add the professional services, just so we're clarifying that those aren't required.
Okay.
But this section should probably be tweaked in its entirety as well, and maybe you don't, maybe you don't need that in there if you do reference consistent with state requirements for bid letting.
But it doesn't hurt to have it in there in case anybody questions it, right?
That's true. I mean, because I don't foresee that changing from state statute, and certainly if it does, and I haven't scanned through to the end, but in a while, anyway, to see if there's that kind of saving grace provision about anything here that conflicts. But, but yeah, I mean, I'm fine leaving it in there, that section, but I definitely think the amounts should be updated then to reflect. I also think if we, if we make kind of an all-encompassing reference to consistent with state requirements for competitive bid practices or something to that effect, that should be covered then, because that's in-state statute, that that's an exception. So either way, but I would definitely, I think it's prudent to modify the, the amounts, at least to reference the state statute. So then as that updates, we're in conjunction with that.
Okay. We're good there?
So we just leave it as, as an update in the amounts that are changed? Sure. Okay.
Is that what you guys want to do? Leave it? Okay.
I think so.
I think the next highlighted spot we have is where it references deputy finance officer. Which we don't have a finance officer, so.
Shouldn't.
So maybe department director and, or, and/or the county auditor? Yeah, I think county auditor is, you know, probably follows the, the sense of what they mean. Okay.
But you're just evaluating them, right? No decisions are being made?
Right.
So a couple paragraphs down from that, then we'll be.
Also county auditor.
So then under C, second sentence, it says the method and degree.
I think it's supposed to be of, I just saw that too.
And make an independent estimate before receiving bids or proposals? I mean, I know we do that on for the highway department, but how do we do that for other other grant services? I don't think we should have to do a cost analysis if we're gonna get through bids.
Yeah, and I don't know how we would do our own cost analysis. I mean, that's kind of the point of bidding, isn't it?
Well, you know, when Brad does it for.
I mean, I guess, yeah, for highway, for like FEMA stuff, I suppose that would be where that would come in.
Well, when he comes in with chip ceiling, he kind of gives us an estimate of what it should be, or where we, or even with the project, road projects, and then they bid it. Which is kind of handy to budget for those big projects, but I don't know how we're gonna do this for other grant services.
And really, we don't get grants for anything over 250,000 typically. I mean, this American Recovery Plan money is a little bit different, obviously, but I don't know.
And I'm sure the engineer there will give us a cost.
Right.
But.
Like for the HVAC, the architect's gonna probably include that, and then we'll get the bids.
But we don't have to do that, right? I mean, these are just this is, we're writing this, so we don't have to have the cost or price analysis done.
Well, I mean, it does. Yeah. It does talk about it under, like that footnote 54 references the Code of Federal Regulations. Yeah, you know, I, I think what they're saying is that when you're gonna spend a quarter million dollars, you know, you ought to know what the market is. And indeed, I, I think every time we have gone out to bid something, we have actually said, well, how, how much should it cost? And I, you know, I, I know when we, we bought that huge ditch digger excavator, thank you. We bought that huge excavator. I, I went in and looked at, you know, what people were paying across the country for that, because, you know, if, if you've, if you've got a limited bidding market, you could conceivably pay a lot more for something than you might if you were doing a national search, for example. So I, you know, I think this is addressed at, you know, making sure that you're not looking at a you know, at, at, at a minimal size bidding.
Or provide something that's more than just a bonus. We're, we've got Rodnus that gets customers for things that are, is pretty perfect. And we'll sometimes ask her area track now, estimates like when we did the law steps, those sorts of things. It just makes good sense, but it doesn't necessarily have to be one of those.
Yeah, you know, I think you put something in here if you think it should be done all the time, and as a, I mean, protection for, I mean, since I've been here, we've always done this. But, you know, for some future evil commission, right, that might not, you know, you would, you would basically require them to get the market, the market cost, and I kind of like that. No, I mean, I think that's their point, is that the three, the three bids, if you did them just in your, your market area, you know, everybody might, might know, they, they could even collude, right? To, bidders could collude to charge you more than, you know, if you look just over the border to North Dakota, you might, you might pay $100,000 less.
But then, like the excavator. The, the company we bought it from, like I don't wanna call it specialized, but not everybody sells them, and we can't go to Sioux City and buy it. Because you can't buy new equipment from Ziegler, you have to buy it out of Sioux Falls. So the bidding process there is skewed. So I mean, you could come back in with the cost analysis, says, well, we can get $100,000 cheaper in Iowa, but you can't go there and buy it anywhere, so it really doesn't matter. So I guess I'm trying to figure out because we're always paying somebody to do that cost analysis. That's what I'm, and then we're gonna go out and get three bids anyway.
Yep.
So what good did the cost analysis do us? Because if it comes in over budget, we just don't buy it.
Yeah, but it, it, yeah, ba- ba- basically, requiring independent estimates just means that you, you go out and try to, the, the county tries to find what the market price is for a piece of equipment, and then they send, send bids out. Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, to me, it seems pretty useful, but I mean, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for this.
So, I just was pulling up that section, because the sentence before that is footnoted, and I wanted to see if that, citing the specific CFR section they took that out of. And it looks to me like what I can find out online of that CFR subsection A does include that second, that, that last sentence too. So I think we probably should leave it in there. I, I agree from a practical standpoint, it's kind of curious to make sure that we're in compliance with that. Hopefully, if nothing else, an open meeting discussion that's documented in the minutes that, you know, Commissioner Smith identified that that does seem reasonable compared to other, you know, however that looks like, that somebody's verified, or, or that, you know, our highway superintendent has vouched for the fact that this is, this is a good price compare, relative compared to what, what he's saying. I think if somebody somewhere notes that, because it doesn't say what we have to do. It doesn't say what we have to do.
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're not required to have a formal process, or, yeah, you, you just have to.
Yeah. It's just a little bit concerning, because it doesn't leave us much guidance on that, but by the same token, it does allow us the flexibility then to just make sure we're not completely at the mark, but only because as I look at it, it's, it's in the CFR, I'd probably leave it in there.
So then do you think we move that the super script for the 54 footnote, should I just move that to the next sentence?
Might be a good idea.
Just since that's in there too.
Yeah, because then that covers the whole paragraph.
Saying is that I can come in here and say, well, I want to buy an expedited, or do you want to buy an expedited? I said, what is going to cost? And you say, well, around $2,000. I guess that's an estimate.
I, I think so, and independent.
Pretty general, and that's what you're saying, and I get that.
And I think we typically do that, we just kind of take for granted that we do it. You know, when Andy comes in and talks about a vehicle, and he says, yeah, this looks good compared to whatever else. I mean, we, we kind of naturally do it, we just don't identify that's what we're doing.
Right. Yeah, you're probably, you're right.
But there might be some oddball ones, you know, when we were looking at drones and stuff, I mean, what's fair? What's a good price? And part of seeking bids is for them to identify to us what's what's reasonable, the, the companies are bidding, so I don't know. But I would just, for what it's worth, in the policy, I'd probably just leave it in there because of that, and I like the idea, Carrie, of moving that footnote. So then that footnote's gonna encompass that whole paragraph, which is gonna reference that subsection A. I don't know why they had it in the sentence beforehand. Because I was gonna say, well, it must not be, it must not be in the CFR, because the footnotes, and the one right beforehand, let's just strike that sentence, but when I went out and looked, I was like, I guess not.
So then it looks like we're kind of on to section eight?
Well, I just had a question on C, contract cost and price, that second paragraph. The county must negotiate profit as a separate element of the price for each contract? How, I mean, I guess that happens when there's only one bid. But how do we determine a reasonable profit for somebody?
Yeah, so, so that, so there's this like principle in like municipal fiscal management, which of course encompasses counties as well, they just use the term municipal. And that is that you want, y- y- you want to make a deal that is reasonable for both the contractor and for you. You don't, you don't really want to squeeze every last dime out of a contractor, so that the contractor goes belly up a year later. So I, I think that's what they're, they're referring to, is that, 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 that you want it to be reasonable for the contractor as well as for the commission, and I, there is no sap percent, because profit margins are different in every industry. You know, the profit margin that a, a, somebody selling an excavator might expect would be very different from the profit margin of somebody who's selling a service of some sort. Yeah, so, 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 so it's really making it a reasonable choice for contractors, so that you don't bid yourself out of, you know, getting any contractor, and so that you don't risk you know, the contractor going under, because you, you push so hard for the best possible deal.
Well, during the bidding process, actually, what happens is that if you get too intrusive and too asking, asking a contractor to furnish too much, they just don't bid. That's one of the reasons I'm the only bidder on one part of New Mexico edition. It's that I was the only one that was willing to risk it. And of course, when you know that, a lot of times, you build more risk into it, into your bid, because you go, you're not sure whether the, the intrusive language is why no one else bid, or whether somebody else, everybody else knows something you don't know.
That would be what I'd worry about.
Well, that's the part, that's one of the reasons you go all of a sudden, when you know that you're the only one that showed up to the pre-bed meetings, that hmm, what's the scoop here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I hadn't been a, have two degrees from USD and kind of had an affection for the place, I may not have bid. That did come into it.
Yeah, top of page 27.
So section A looks like it just quotes the statute. Could we just reference the statute in case it changes?
I like that idea.
So the county shall adhere to SDCL six dash one dash one. Yep, leave it at that.
I like that. And even if that becomes outdated and, and superseded later, this one I would probably reference a specific statute so that then we could, you know, sometimes they'll go through and update the code and, and move something like that to a different statute, modify the language. Well, I think implicitly then, I mean, we would still want to update our policy if we knew it, but I think implicitly we're going to track with, with that statute. And I would leave it so it's a very clear place for people to go look and find that conflict of interest section. So I like that. And then I just striking the, the rest.
Yeah, it, it, since, you know, not every county employee is a a legal scholar, we might even want to include that language in the, you know, might want to put in end notes and include the actual language of the paragraph. That might be helpful. Because most people looking at that reference would say, huh, and go on to the next section.
Well, maybe we say the county shall adhere to SDCL six dash one dash one regarding conflicts of interest for local officers or
Yeah.
appointed officials.
So regarding conflicts of interest for
elected and appointed officials.
Appointed officials, okay. And then in that next paragraph, so I changed that federal to grant award.
I think that's consistent with what we've been doing.
And then in that next paragraph again, there's a, in the second line there, there's a federal award. We could change that to grant award. Then we get to that next highlighted section where Lexi wanted to strike out determine.
And where is that under organizational conflicts? Are you still?
Yes, sorry. It's in that next section C.
Cause I mean, I can give my opinion on any of those things, but you know, I think sometimes conflicts of interest sometimes don't necessarily, I would hope need me to say, hey, don't do that. And like you kind of referenced earlier, Betty, depending on the person sitting in the seat, you might get different views. So, so I, I don't want to take the, the responsibility off the individual themselves to of, well, county attorney said it was okay, it's okay. Like no. But definitely I think changing it to should, I mean, if anybody has a question or concern or there are quandaries that come up, you just need to bounce it off somebody else where you say, what do you think of this? And I think it's appropriate then for our office to potentially be that person. Doesn't have to be. But so I'm not trying to abdicate responsibility on that, but you know, I want somebody to get in trouble later too, that they didn't run it by us. It's like, well, that one was obvious, if you will, or not.
So you would just change shall to should?
Yeah. If, or if anybody has any other suggestions for that. It doesn't have to be our office. I mean, if you guys want it to run by you or I mean, ultimately you're going to approve any grant stuff anyway. So probably there's
So you could put by the county attorney or county commission.
Yeah, you could do potential conflict should be reviewed by the county attorney, county commission or designees. Cause I'd still want to, you know, cause my other, I like the designate me language in there. My thought being, I mean, if I'm not available, somebody in our office should be able to handle that. But I also like, you know, if you guys know of a conflict, something, I mean, there's definitely times where just because of your involvement in the community, you might know of something that I wouldn't know of and
What county attorney covers your office?
Oh, absolutely.
Cause it doesn't say state's attorney.
That's true. I mean, we could, we could change that to state's attorney if you wanted to. We could change that state's. There's probably another spot up there that I think probably part of the reason that that didn't really trip me up that to change that was I think in statute, when it describes my job duties, it's going to say that I'm the attorney for the county. So.
But I like county attorney in case we have to hire somebody.
Wow, that's probably good too. Good call.
Yeah.
That's a really, yeah, we probably should leave it as county attorney.
That covers everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So then at the end of the sentence, or at the end of that section where it says to determine, do I just strike out to determine?
Yeah.
Me and potential organization. That's another way to phrase that to determine, to evaluate whether it's likely that they.
I like that.
Evaluate, okay.
That sounds better to me too.
Cause where would this come into play? Say I had a partner who was bidding it, you know, my comp- our company's bidding a job. I mean, I would, that would be a conflict of interest for myself. I'd recuse myself, right? And then, then we'd be good.
I would think.
Cause the only way this would probably play into effect is if I went, no, I don't have any, I can make an impartial decision on this. Even though my, my company is bidding it. Correct? Is that what this is contemplating?
Yeah. And I think if there's any, you know, going back up to that SDCL six, 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 one, one, I mean, or if it's just a flat out like, hey, I don't even think that this company can be involved in that. I mean, if to take it a step further to say there's going to be too much back and forth here. And then this is a public official who's directly benefiting for it. And there are some things too that we as elected officials cannot bid or participate in strictly by statute. So if anybody has a question and they feel as though, yeah, probably a family member or something in that regard is, is benefiting where you just need to come in and say, no. But it does go on in the policy to say not that it's necessarily going to exclude them. So I think that's where that evaluation comes in of, are they outright excluded from bidding this because it's a conflict of interest? Is there some way to mitigate those circumstances to say, yeah, you need to step out and not vote on this or I, you know, what, what does that look like?
Cause I guess that would be a simpler one. If a grandchild of a commissioner came in bidding, would that grandparent, should that grandparent step aside?
Yeah, that's within, that's within the definition of the conflict statute. It's, they define who is a, a family interest. Define who it is and it does include grandchild's, I think it even is like step grandchildren and step grandparents, as I recall. It's been a while since I looked at that.
Cause it seems like it usually ends up, well, I have no financial interest.
Right.
But if they're
And that's part of the definition too, is have a financial interest in the outcome.
Right. And that one, that's the easy one. But if you said the grandchild or a family member is in that statute.
Yeah.
And that would just, if it was you, that's simplified by Dick would recuse himself.
Yeah.
From the vote, you could be part of the discussion.
Right.
You'd be recusing, that would solve it then, right? That would be always, they wouldn't, so they wouldn't be excluded.
Yeah, Ella could sell lemonade on the line, on the, down the lawn over here. And I would exclude myself from whether she could do that or not to, whether we, on our decision on whether to allow that.
And I think that one through four go on to specifically identify then how you're going to mitigate that in some of those situations. So the organizational relationship shall be disclosed as part of any notices to potential contractors. Any county employees or officials directly involved in the activities of the related organization are excluded from the selection and award process. A competitive bid quota or other basis of valuation is considered and the commission is determined that contracting with the related organization is in the best interest of the program involved. And I think that's where that's kind of that, I would say saving grace provision, but if you don't have anybody else in the area who does whatever administrative functions you need.
So you just read selection, part of the selection process, they need to be excluded from. Would that be part of the discussion then? They'd have to be excluded from? The whole, the mission just exclude themselves from the whole process? Become part of the audience?
I mean, I think depending on what the nature of the relationship is potentially, yes, I think that's where having that, having that in the event of a potential organizational conflict, having the county attorney or designate me review that to decide what does that cover? And it's kind of hard to, to determine that without knowing, I mean, depending on the relationship and where that person is involved in the process. Are we talking about a subcontractor? Are we talking about the grant administrator? Are we talking about, why, what are we?
I guess I'm looking at the person who's actually going to receive the contract. Person who's going to do the work and get paid for it.
And so the organizational conflicts of interest may exist when due to the county's relationship with a subsidiary affiliated or parent organization that is a candidate for the award of the contract in connection with federally funded activities. So depending on that level of involvement and where that person is related in things, I mean, that could really vary.
See, I think, I, I don't think they'd want to be involved in the discussion just because you're using Dick's here as his granddaughter. She's like, huh, she uses real lemons. The other ones don't. I mean, you know.
And she's really cute.
Yeah. There you go. That's the other thing.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Sure. And that's why you have the, the duty to disclose, the official has the duty to disclose any potential conflict upfront. And then it can be, I've done this a couple of times with you guys where I've said it, maybe I should be recruiting myself, recusing myself from this vote. And then you'll, and a couple of times you talked me into it that, that, oh, it's all going to be fine. You know, it's no problem, but it was my duty to disclose upfront. And then during that, then, then all the discussion pretty much halts until we decide whether, whether I should be involved in the discussion, whether I should be involved in the decision. Those are two steps. Am I on the right track there?
I, I think so. And I think that then, you know, then some follow-up questions as well. Well, hey, it isn't your granddaughter selling lemonade. Your granddaughter is the VP of the lemon distributor who you know, do we think that that's enough of a, you know, she's not going to be involved that, that I'm aware of in any aspect of this, but I did want to let you know that she works for this company and therefore indirectly could potentially benefit from this. And then it's a, I mean, it's hard to say there's going to be some that are obvious, the granddaughter selling the lemonade. I mean, there's going to be some that are obvious. And you probably don't, also you probably don't even need the county attorney's opinion on that. It's just going to be, you're going to disclose it and then probably abstain from discussion, but.
And we should, we should vote on it as far as commissioners. Because I've seen too many times where it's, nah, you'll be okay. And then somebody gets cornered out in the hallway and it's like, well, you probably shouldn't know, but
Yeah.
this way it's a public record. You voted, you know, we, we either voted to have you in or not, or it was three to one or you know, just that way we're all on the hook.
Right. And there's been a, there's been a, I think there was one time where I, I was uncomfortable myself. And even though you were thinking that I should be included, I left the room during the discussion even until it was done. But I don't remember even what the subject was anymore. It was a, or it was right for me not to be, in, in my opinion, so.
And you have the right to make that determination.
Correct.
If you just want to say, I'm, I'm not part of this.
Yeah, I should not be part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
That's not a discussion then.
Right. Sorry, guys, I'm leaving. It's, you're on the hook.
Yep. Under investigation.
Yeah. So it's, it's just that third to the last line, the word federal awarding, just take out federal.
So the grant awarding or just the awarding agency?
So the, under investigation, the third to the, middle of the third to the last line, the violation shall report, be reported to the awarding agency. Yeah.
The only other thing too, is we don't have a resolution up there in the second line where it refers to a resolution. We don't, we don't have one of those.
Did I just strike that?
Just, yeah, investigations based on reports of perceived violations of this policy shall comply with any governing state and federal laws and regulations.
Yeah.
And we're done.
Done with the worst of it. Then there's that attachment A. Yeah, they're just, and I only had one note on that, which was to change finance officer to auditor.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And then it looks like it goes into attachment B, a few pages down.
Pennington County in there.
I'd rather have their budget than I guess risk that they can have. Guess I'd rather have their income.
So then it looks like we just had that highlighted section. Purchases by any Clay County department or office is limited to a maximum calendar year total of 25,000 for many business with which Clay County employee has a financial interest.
Man, I, I think that's, yeah, I, I don't like that paragraph.
That was one that Alexis noted too. See what your thoughts were on that.
So we're saying here that you can spend up to twenty, you can buy $25,000 worth of product or whatever from a business that you actually own part of, that employee owns, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or it's got a financial interest, I guess.
But those are just for grants.
Yeah.
This isn't regular budget.
No. How does that work?
But you, we could potentially run into this quite often, just on a regular budget. County employee could have financial interests if their husband or wife owns the business.
We've been lucky that we really haven't had much, but when we get audited, we have to disclose anything like that, but it's never, it's usually just a tiny amount.
Bid not a co- well, he could have somebody bidding, doing some excavating work. And it's, you know, the wife could work here. Yeah. And plus, or you could have IT work.
That's usually a good process.
Right. But the IT work, well, that's not necessarily a bid work. Right, but the IT work, well, that's not necessarily a bid work.
I mean, if they, if they've declared it. So what, what are they saying? After twenty-five thousand dollars, it needs to be run by the commissioners or what?
Yeah.
It says it's limited to twenty-five thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, I bet, that seems so arbitrary.
In a small county, if there's no other bidders.
It, it just seems so arbitrary.
I see why they put that in there.
But it's, it's all about conflict of interest, so what's, you're talking to twenty-five thousand, so, yeah. So, we can easily run into that problem. They could be the cheapest bidder. Every time.
Well, how did we do the IT contracts? Did we go with?
They can, we did that.
Yeah, we did, yeah, that's right, we did bid it. So that would be.
But that doesn't exclude.
No, they, they would still, if they, if they get a bunch of workforce, it was over twenty-five thousand. They'd be capped. So their bid would not be.
I would like to just get rid of that. I mean, I don't think it adds anything.
I don't think so either.
To the process, and I, I think it, it's arbitrary.
See it there, but I don't know.
See the purpose of it.
Let me look at the notes for decisions on that.
Cause yeah, once you got to, they wouldn't bid.
You have your, you know, certain West River counties.
Right.
Yeah, and you know, I, I also don't like that sentence on, um, you know, share ownership being excluded because you know, that seems awfully awfully arbitrary as well. I mean, yeah, I mean, it'd be possible to own, not a controlling interest, but for, to affect you materially. You know, and.
Right, forty-nine point nine percent. You know, cause it's, it says majority.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, I guess I would, um, I mean, I like the reminder on statement of financial interest form, um.
But employees don't fill those out.
They don't right now.
But they probably should.
Um, I, I fill out something similar to that when we get audited. But I don't have employees fill it out. And I just list. Right.
But I, I, I think it'd be a, actually a, a good thing for, um, at least department heads. You know, who are proposing decisions for the commission to fill out a financial interest form. I mean, I've seen it done in other, um, in other jurisdictions, just for department heads who are actually making critical decisions about.
So Rod Aina and Drew. Is that it? They're the only department heads that wouldn't have to fill that out currently.
Yeah. When do we fill those out?
Right, supposed to do the first year of a year.
I mean, that's the other thing, it says, you know, filling out the new form annually, we've got that highlighted, like in that next paragraph.
I think that's just a piece of paper we need to throw in front of everybody at the beginning of the year, at the first meeting.
So I was going back up and looking to see, cause that twenty-five thousand dollars is a very specific figure. And, you know, up above when we talked about small purchase procedures, that references cost less than twenty-five thousand dollars services or supplies or for purchasing equipment that covers, so I'm wondering if that comes from different, a different section.
Yeah, I, I think the twenty-five K comes from the old definition where you have to start soliciting, uh, multiple bids. Cause, uh, state contracts in like, for instance, uh, the city used to be, it used to be a twenty-five thousand dollar limit before they would have to get other bids. I think that's bumped to fifty K now, right? I think it's fifty.
Yeah, any purchase over fifty thousand for us.
Right. Yeah.
But if they're considering small purchases, anything under twenty-five, that's what twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Anything in excess of twenty-five.
Right.
It's not considered a.
I think that's what I mean, is that I think this, this may, that twenty-five may have come from that old limit.
But it's sure a great area that they left in there for twenty-five to fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not bid worthy, but it's not a small purchase.
Yeah.
What are you considering it?
Somebody decided to split some hairs along the way.
Is it part of South Dakota clinical law six dash one dash one? It's not.
It's not in that section, no.
I was just curious.
But I was looking to see if there was.
Yeah, that's quite a stretch there, twenty-five thousand dollars. It'd be pretty wide open up there.
Mm-hmm. And it, that, that number keeps looking smaller and smaller and smaller as the years roll by.
It doesn't take long to get twenty-five thousand dollars in purchase.
No, no.
So how do we put in there anyway? Just any employee? I guess it's probably in the next part, in the next paragraph. Any employee who has a financial interest in an outside business. On anybody that bids and provides services for the county. I think anybody who does that should have to fill out a financial disclosure statement, correct?
Yeah, but the next paragraph says statement of financial issues shall be updated by employees in even numbered years.
Except for elected officials and appointed department heads. Yeah, yeah, that refile annually.
Cause it'd be nice if they, you know, if they would just fill out that financial interest statement. Because if they don't somehow, then we could avoid the contract because of it.
You could just make everybody.
Know who they were and their son or daughter bid. As in they were an employee and maybe they're part of that business too. And we had no idea and awarded it. We should be able to know.
I mean, you could just make it, you know, that they completed upon employment and annually. And skip that even numbered year business, so that everybody completes it annually.
Yeah, they'd still have to leave that if they had to update it, if they acquired something in the meantime, you'd have to leave that in there. But getting back to that, what are we going to do with that top one there, that twenty-five thousand?
I think we should just delete it.
I kind of, I agree with, I agree with Patty on that one. I think you just take it out of there.
Yeah.
I, I don't see a reason for it to have it in.
Well, I think any employee that has a financial interest, no matter if we only pay them five thousand or ten thousand, that should have to be disclosed.
Correct, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, we should, we should have the financial interest disclosure for any amount and, uh, as far as limits on purchases, I don't see a great purpose to that.
Like you said earlier, it might be a small county, they might not have anything around them very close to them. And, and not, I guess this is for us, but I mean, we could run into the same problem here. They might be the only one around that does it.
Sure, and that's, that's why the twenty-five thousand limit really hurts us. Because we, that may get us to run out of options in a big hurry.
Correct.
For no real good reason, as long as we know what we're getting into, who, who we're dealing with in any potential conflicts that we can evaluate the, the risk of. I think that that serves our duty to, uh, enter into contracts knowingly and with, uh, with good due diligence.
Right.
So then if we just delete that paragraph and then you get down to that disclosure form and require it annually and leave that language in there about updating promptly.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I would also like to get rid of that sentence about holding shares uh, of stock in a publicly traded company shall not be deemed ownership for purchases of this disclosure unless it amounts to a controlling interest. I, I, I just think we ought to.
Yeah, cause we're going to cover that with any interest.
Exactly.
But we probably need to add this to the handbook also.
Yeah. Very true.
Yep.
So get rid of that holding shares of stock sentence, leave the rest of that paragraph.
I think so.
Okay. And then let's see, the statement of financial interest form shall be completed upon employment and shall be updated by all employees annually.
Yeah.
Um, then I can get rid of the next sentence because I think that covers all employees, right? Or do we say all employees, elected officials and appointed department heads file annually?
Yeah, probably should be inclusive, just list them all.
So they're gonna, they're gonna do it when they're hired and then annually. Do we say annually or for, for you easier, first of every year? I mean, if this person was hired, I mean, cause it'd be stagnant with.
Right, right.
Yeah, so January of every year, say. Cause we, we, we don't want to.
In my mind, I'm thinking like paperwork that we do annually would be like the W four, everybody, you know, updates their W four annually. If we could do it at the same time as that, and we typically do that in January, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so we just.
The new calendar year.
But how do we say in there, it needs to be updated also when it becomes an interest?
So that's that next sentence, this information shall be updated promptly if they acquire any more additional financial interest. And this shouldn't be in there, cause that doesn't make sense, but this information shall be updated.
Now in the disclosure statement.
And I could put, so that next page is that, you know, um, exhibit A.
Yeah.
I could put that in parentheses behind statement of financial interest form so that it refers to that next page. If we want to use their format for their form.
That kind of sums it all up then, doesn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, and you know, this is a case where I would love to get this a week before the meeting at which we're gonna approve it. So that we really have a chance to go over it line by line, cause if we get it the day before, we'll all be up till midnight.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, I hear you. You mean the, the updates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the final copy with updates, if we can get, you know, just not schedule it until we've had it for a week, that would be great.
Cause it's a good sleeper. I'm sorry to say, but you're right. I don't think I made it to midnight.
I hate to waste this Sabbath next Sunday.
Yeah, you'd have to have a really uncomfortable chair.
My chair is pretty comfortable, I think.
No, actually, that's my strategy, is I, I use an uncomfortable chair when I have to do boring things.
Yeah, that is.
We have, we have, uh, we have a, a milking stool in our house.
Oh.
I think Travis probably, you know what that is. And, uh, yeah, you can't, you don't fall asleep sitting on a milking stool, you end up in a heap on the floor in a hurry.
You just got the one leg on it then, or?
Yep, yeah, it's made out of a single two by four. And I, we had, we had them when I was a kid and we milk cows by hand. And, uh, when we started having trouble with the kids leaning back in their chairs and, and stressing the chairs out around the, the dinner table, I built, uh, well, actually I built two milking chairs, cause we had two eligible candidates for it. And, and then lean back, get a reprimand, lean back, get another reprimand. Third, third time you're, you're on the milking school for, for X number of meals.
What's that, low tables or high?
Doesn't, you know.
You don't get to the table.
Yeah, it's about, it's about that tall, so it's about normal, no chair height.
You don't have.
We still have one.
You don't have the cows lean on.
Yeah, I even stained it and finished it.
Ooh.
Ooh, you fancy.
ours is stained in the barn too.
Yeah.
And so then that, that next page then would just be that financial interest statement and change the Penningtons to Clay's, obviously, and then, uh,
True.
And then take out that sentence about the stock, um, in that second paragraph. Stock holdings. And then, um, towards the bottom, just requiring it annually or, you know, promptly, if anything new should pop up. Just so that it mirrors the page above it, the policy.
So when we put this into place and we update the handbook, if we could just update the handbook at the same time.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we can do that.
Conflict of interest policy, just after, um, that'll be what, at least the first of October before we pass this. We just start the first of the year with conflict? Or do it immediately?
I, I think you might want to just start first of the year, go from there. I think that's
We're close enough by the time we get through this, it'll be another month.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I figured. I mean, we'll be close enough with the first of the year then.
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be a problem with that, I guess. We didn't have it, if we would've never got time today, we would've never got through the rest of this. So I mean.
It hasn't appeared to be much of rush so far, so.
Got a few other things that may be a little more serious.
Exactly.
Now, did the departments, do they need to have a copy of this, three new?
Yeah, I'll send it out to everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be useful if we had, you know, if there, if there were concerns people had, it'd be useful to know what they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very true. And this won't be on the agenda for this month at all. We'll take whatever extra time for the budget.
Yeah. Cause I mean, this is it, we're, we're done then, and then sending out the final draft and.
Passing it or any further discussion on it will be.
October. We made it, guys.
All right. So are, are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to, we don't have to do any motion compared to the, uh, related to this yet, do we?
No.
No.
Cause I'll send out the final.
Yeah.
Final draft, and then everybody can have some time. I'll put it on in October.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Not if anybody had anything for the budget, that'd be the only thing. I mean, we did talk about some of it, but.
Yeah.
But we're really gonna have to dive into that next, is everybody gonna be here next Tuesday then?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll dive into that.
Everybody but Carrie.
Keep the, keep the agenda small then. Move it to the end of the month if it's not that important.
Yeah, I, the only thing I could, I guess I could see is, is what we're going to do on organizations that we're not required to budget. That's gonna be realistic.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
I went through that about four times.
Do we have, um, any indication on what the grand list will look like?
The what list?
The grand list, the property tax rules.
Yeah.
Like the percentage increase, decrease or whatever?
You're talking for next year, right?
Yeah, for twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, we should have that.
Yeah, um, it hasn't changed too much from what I projected. Actually, I think our growth was the same. So I can mail that out to you guys or email that out to you guys too.
Cause I, you know, I think it really helps to get the sharpest revenue projection possible.
Where, what we don't know, and that doesn't come until February, is the money that doesn't get spent this year.
Right, right.
That's usually our biggest influx of money.
Yeah, but that, you might be able to do an estimate, like a rough, rough estimate. Projection.
It's pretty stable and that's the good and the bad of, depending on property tax only.
Yeah, it, it also to some extent depends on whether, um, departments accelerate spending toward the end of the year. You know, the municipality that I worked for, you know, I was on the legislative council for, but I also worked for the city council every year would be like, surprise, as of today. You know, you, you can't, you can't spend money unless it's absolutely essential.
Yeah.
And because, because at the end of the month, departments would try to, you know, like to spend down. And, you know, there are ways of slowing the.
I will say ours typically don't. I mean.
Oh, that's good to know.
If I. Yeah, here's us, because you never know about snow and whether they're gonna have, you know, overtime for that and stuff, but.
That's, that's mainly out of his control, but, uh.
And cause if it starts snowing in October, then projects don't get done either.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I, uh, yeah, but I, yeah, I've been, I've been complicit in some of those, those issues when I worked at Geological Survey. I'm, I'm afraid.
Yeah, no, the, the military is the.
Yeah.
The most prominent practitioner of that.
You don't spend it, you don't get it next year.
Widgets, you gotta, you gotta be careful that you don't leave too many widgets on the table or too many widgets unspent. That's, that was the name we had for those that in state government was using your, you count your widgets.
Yeah, the other wildcard too, always, and it's throughout the year. It's not just at the end of the year, but you know, what's that court-appointed attorney budget gonna do or what's that, um, mental health budget gonna do towards the end of the year and.
Yeah.
Never can quite predict that either. I mean, sometimes people have more mental health problems when it gets closer to the holidays, so then that might pick up towards the end of the year too, but I mean, for the most part, the department heads really don't just spend money at the end of the year for the sake of, you know, spending it, so there is usually something.
Well, like Andy's, it's something that sometimes with the, he doesn't know how many juveniles he's gonna be.
Right.
Yeah.
Could be a big, a big one, and how long are they gonna be there? He can have one person use up his whole budget on that.
Yeah.
And that's why often. And quite often, uh, we'll have a planned expense that will hold until the end of the year because if necessary, we can do it the following year. Uh, I, I know that we're very cautious to not deliberately spend down our budget at year end and, and that is true about the military. When I was in Marine Corps, they would always tell us, you know, we're gonna spend this money at the end of the fiscal year, you know, and, and in, in my world, that was artillery shells that we spent it on, but the, um, we, uh, right now I might have plans for, uh, maybe a, uh, a computer replacement or something like that that we'll put off until November to, because there's so many things in our budgets that we can't control. And, uh, make sure that we, um, that, that we don't spend it out. Uh, Jerry Summerville, when he was on the commission, was very, very cautious about that because he saw that kind of waste up at the university and, and didn't wanna see it here. So he always reminded me that that's what contingency was for. Cause when these things came up out of the, out of your control and he always encouraged me to, to budget, uh, if you budgeted for something to, to do it and then a transfer from contingency, but yeah, we still do that. So all that deputies ask if they can get another shirt, you know, or, you know, maybe a couple of pairs of pants or something. And quite often I say, well, let's look at that in, in November and then so suddenly you might see, uh, invoices from the uniform store in November and December and that, that's not deliberately spending down the budget. That's just, uh, addressing needs that we can afford uh, because of the, how the year's gone. I'm pretty comfortable with, uh, I, I think that every, every expenditure that I've seen has been defensible.
I do have one thing though, that I would like to share. But, uh, but the deal is, I just seen this the other day, that states got more money now that they're going to come out again with another, with more from the federal again. And I didn't quite get all the facts on it. It just, I had just a blur gun, my, came up on a, I was looking at some stuff on agriculture and it came up with there and it sounded like it, it was more with help being with buildings again.
Hmm.
But I haven't seen any more about it. They were talking about it and I kept, I, now I can't find it, of course.
I know there's money coming from.
No, it was, it was something to do with the, the buildings. But I could, it was cost of keeping buildings, but I hadn't seen anything more.
I haven't heard anything.
Who would know?
It, it, it was coming out of the, it was coming from the state, but I haven't seen one.
So would that be Department of Revenue?
Finance and management.
Maybe that's where it was coming.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm gonna see if I can find it again, but I tried this last night, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, if anybody finds it, send it around.
Yeah, Chris, Chris should know, our, our association.
But maybe we're not, maybe we're not eligible for it, but looked like, like you were a federal. It might, if I was thinking along the lines, even with the jail, it was, it sounded me like maybe we could use some of that to require the crowd, but I don't know.
The stills contract started, we can use it.
Yeah.
I can't believe how much money they got.
Yeah, I do think that's a legitimate, just uncertainty for the rest of this year that it really depends.
But can we, can we get them for the rest of the year?
Well, I mean, right now, I think they're both, but I know Phil for sure is taking court appointments and he gets paid then at the hourly rate. So I mean, he's got some cases with our office, he's our, uh, as opposed to counsel with our office and is getting paid, he'll submit a voucher at the end. Um, there's some other attorneys in town too who are on that kind of role.
But I was wondering if there was one of those big last four months.
Sure, reach out to him and ask.
Under that contract also. But if they're willing to do it for next year. We can do that, can't we?
I would think that you can reach, sure, reach out to him and ask. I think that, um, you know, any cases that they would have right now would still fall in that hourly rate.
Right, that would just go from the date the contract signed. That was one thing I forgot to ask. Would make it effective immediately.
Well, if they wanted to, they could always do an amendment.
I'll move to Jer.
Second, motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pull the same sign. We're adjourned. They're supposed to do that.
Yeah, I think we were supposed to, but. Oh, that's right, she is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
But I will look to see if I can find that.
Yeah.
I thought, I had it, I had it, I thought I was going to print it.
Things are changing. And it's.